This call is now being raised.
All right, welcome to the eighth podcasts for North Georgia Advocate and I'm here with Verell and a special guest, Jody White. She has been a big advocate and for the citizens of Hall County, bringing up, you know, a lot of misgivings and finding out a lot of the, we won't call it corruption at the point, at this point right now, but a lot of, you know, shady things going on and she brought it to the courts and to the people and before we get into anything, Jody, just give us a little bit of background about yourself and how you got involved in all this?
Well, I, i- involved in the, the whole thing or, or the, what we just mentioned?
Well, my, we won't go back all the way with the board of education, but just slightly with the board of, with the county commission and the planning commission and.
Yeah, I just, you know, I just go to the meetings and I sit there and I kind of watch and as I watch things progress, you know, and you talk to people and then you talk to more people, you learn more and as you learn more, then you start looking and what's there is evident and right in front of your face and after a while, when it's right in front of your face blatantly, you just go ahead and you find out what's happening. I mean, at least I do because that's the way I, my mind works, but I guess when I discovered that, you know, I was told a few people were seen together and then I go and I figure out, well, you know, I'm gonna go check this situation out and low and behold, what do I see? Was what I thought I would see in the beginning and hoped I didn't see, but was. And unfortunately had the unfortunate-ness of being the witness to what we called the sunshine law breaking. And unfortunately, you know, as we all know, our lovely Attorney General says they was just discussing healthcare and vacations, which we could do if we really wanted to, but I don't believe you turn a water faucet off going from county business to, you know, talking about your health and your vacation, but if that's what they want to spin it. And then when you find more charges, that's a little, little worrisome.
Yeah, no, yeah, you're talking about the, the fiasco with the planning commission and we've got the big hearing coming up on November, the, I mean, December the 17th.
Yep.
And they, uh, set it for nine o'clock in the morning on a Wednesday. So naturally, most of the citizens won't be able to come.
Well, I did question that and I, there is a very good legitimate answer for that, I will say. Um, each of the gentlemen that have to bring before the hearing, it's kind of like a due process thing, kind of like they are going to court, but they're going to court in the commissioner's room. So each one of them have to be heard separately. So they, um, the commissions are allowed to question them and their counsel is allowed to rebuttal back and ask questions also. So it is like a court hearing essentially. So each individual could be potentially a few hours. So, you know, if you would start at, you know, a six P M. Meeting, you know, nobody wants to be there till, you know, midnight, one o'clock in the morning. Um, could they have done it on a Friday? Still not a great day, but we all know the government's not going to do nothing on a weekend. So.
And that'd be ideal to do it on a Saturday morning, just get there at eight or nine o'clock and they could go all day. But they don't want to deal with the overtime and the extra people that'll be there and I get it. I mean, I understand.
So it's gonna be each planning commissioner plus planning staff plus administration or who's, who's all supposed to be going up there?
It will just be the three planning commissioners.
Okay.
Beth or nobody or Katie's not going to be there. So it's just.
Um, whether they're there, I have no idea, but they will not be part of the hearing. No.
They will not be part of that. I'm sure they may be called as witnesses possibly. I'm not sure.
I don't think it, I don't think there's, um, any witnesses. I think it's just a hearing, just counsel and the planning commissioner, their self-git to speak.
That's interesting that none of the staff have to come, even, I mean, I mean, maybe as, as witnesses, but for their own each hearing too, because like Beth resigned, I'm assuming she had reasons to resign. Um, but the other, was it Katie?
Katie, yeah.
Involved in that too, right? And then, uh, I, I believe in the investigation, the report that came out. Uh, Zach Probes was also questioned and asked if he knew about the meetings and whatnot, right?
Yes, he was.
Yeah, so.
That wouldn't go in front of the commissioner. If he ever got called, it'd have to go back to the A G. Or something, right?
That, that would go to, that would go to the commissioners. The commissioners are his boss. Uh, that would ha, that would go the same way this goes. Um, the A G. Could get involved, um, and our, our county solicitor has also chimed in finally, after a few emails and a few phone calls has chimed in and said that, you know, she will take into consideration what the board, um, determines whether she will file charges or not.
Right. And also, the A G. Said they could reopen the investigation too, depending on what goes on with the hearing, right?
The A G. Can reopen the investigation that I had filed. They never closed the investigation to their, um, what they considered their, um, self-reporting.
Okay. Cause I know I'd read something at the bottom of that report that said that the A G.'s hands were tied on the other meetings that Greg and David found out when they, the other five meetings. But they could reopen it if something, if certain things happened, they had the ability to reopen everything. I just didn't know how all of that was going to play out.
Oh, well, I mean, we, we all have opinions. Um, my opinion is I don't, I don't see an A G. Getting involved since Hall County is being reactive to the situation. And if the solicitor gets involved, um, and presses charges, they're going to get what you can get for that crime.
Right. And this is just misdemeanors at this point.
Right.
You know, and it may not be worth the trouble to do it, but it may also, if the solicitor does bring charges, they could send a message, hey, you're going to be found criminal, be liable too. You're just not going to get a slap on the wrist and and get to heave ho.
Well, even a misdemeanor charge shows up on your record anywhere you go.
Right.
Yeah.
They don't care about their records at this point. They're towards the tail end of their careers. They don't care about no charges showing up on my screen.
We know, hey, we can all, we can all hope that somebody has some morals and values and wants a clean record, even in their later days.
Yeah. Most, most of them aren't in politics, unfortunately.
Oh, yeah. And one thing that I, there's not anything to do with the hearing. It's just kind of odd with the planning commission. We were figuring it up. These guys make around 24 grand a year, counting their per diem and their monthly salaries. I mean, why would a planning commissioner need a per diem or any of that? I mean, that stuff that the community needs to look at.
Well, the per diem was changed back. It was a few years ago. They do not receive per diem now. They, um, just receive a standard pay now.
Okay.
Um, they just receive a standard pay. The only board that receives a per diem anymore is the, um, Board of Assessors and that is our last board that will be fixed.
Okay. We have, there's no need for a per diem period and for any of that. That's just a lot of wasted tax money.
Yeah.
You know, what do you expect? Do you threaten to keep the retirement if they get, I mean, they're most likely, I think they're going to get damn guilty. I mean, and replaced. I mean, does that, can the county rip the retirement or anything that they have gained through that?
Um, I don't, the planning commission is appointed, appointed, so they are not privy to their, privy to the retirement benefits.
I didn't know if that appointed was privy to the retirement.
No, they are just a, they're just paid. That's it.
Okay. They get no other benefits or anything. That's good.
Right. And they have been paid through this, but that is per Georgia law that they had to be paid.
Well, I understand that. I mean, you can't do that without.
I mean, due process. They gotta find him guilty.
Process, yeah. So, you know, and it's going to be a real interesting to see how it goes and.
Jody, you've received, uh, some emails from certain commissioners in the past as, uh, any of the, uh, three individuals emailed you or contacted you or have their attorneys talked to you or anything?
Absolutely not.
Okay, that's good. I'm glad to hear that.
Told them to stay the hell away from you.
Yeah.
For a little while.
I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm glad to hear that, you know? I mean, that's why I need to be reaching out to residents of the county.
Well, and I know why Verell bringing it up probably is there's been a lot of intimidation in the past from people when they try to go after anybody and it's certain people in the county and you can get, they try to send feelers out and intimidate you.
Yeah, I think, I think they found out that I'm not easily intimidated.
Right. No doubt. And, you know, and the, this isn't the first lawsuit you brought up or taking anything to court. Uh, you did one with Braswell and earlier with conflict of interest.
Right.
That's what rattled their cages to start with, and they just didn't realize that was the warning shot.
Well, actually I was very kind on that. I gave him a warning shot beforehand. Um, I gave him, I gave him warning papers, um, a week before that and he went ahead and voted again. And like, like I had stated before, had, if the whole county had the ethics that surrounding counties do, that will, those ethics would have held.
Right. Yeah, no doubt. So, all right, well, let's get into two more things that you're heavy in. Uh, what about this Cagle Road subdivision being built right down your road, right down the road from your house? And you've been posting a lot of videos about how dangerous it is to pull out in the highway.
But isn't, isn't that the one that Braswell needed to stay out of from the vote? Isn't that what he voted on? Right? Yeah.
Yes. Um, that is the Cagle Mill Road project. That is, um, that they, that was the last of the high density before the moratorium was put down. And then they tabled it and fortunately got tabled to December 11th. Uh, and that, you know, there's an exit coming off the back onto a dirt road, as you've seen in the multiple videos I've made. And the, and the other main one comes right there off 365 where you have to cross the two lanes to the middle, the two northbound lanes to the middle to get to the southbound lane. And, you know, if you're lucky, you may get in that far right lane, but there's little to no chance you're going to get in that far right lane to not be breaking a traffic law.
No, and getting in that left lane, you take your life in your own hands because that's the fast lane, you know?
Uh, I mean, if, if you turn the video up a little bit on, on, you know, the video that I did. Yeah. I mean, you can hear it. I, I, I gunned it to get out there and I've kind of discussed this with a few people and, you know, I, I even discussed it with our county engineer of, you know, my concerns of it. And he said, you know, oh, well, you know, I drive a three cylinder car and, uh, he, um, I said, well, I drive an eight cylinder car. I'm going to tell you this, when I pull out there, I have it hammered down and I, there's cars on my rear end by the time I get out there. So how you're doing with the three cylinder, you're like, you must be playing the lottery.
Well, yeah. The least they could do is if it passes, they could at least put in a lane, kind of like they have up at Jay Moore Farms when you're turning south, coming back to Hall County. They got one that goes for about a half a mile where you can merge into the fast lane if you have to. You know, they don't have to do something, another red light or something at that intersection if this passes.
Well, G dot has no plans. That is not in G dot's plan. And that actually, that video I took, that includes the red light that they just added at White Hall Road.
And that's unbelievable.
So you can see.
Building out roundabouts, planning roundabouts right now.
Oh, well, well, the end planned is, you know, widening 365, but that's not until, you know, 2050.
Right.
I think it's going to take a certain number of, uh, people dying until some, or maybe even somebody important dying to finally get the, get it widened or get some attention to it.
Yeah.
Hall County firefighter or whoever just had his whole family get killed last year.
Yeah, that was, that was the sheriff. Yep.
Yeah.
His wife and three kids.
Yeah, deputy or whoever, his wife and three kids in that Corvette come flying down through there like 150 miles.
Wow.
Yeah, instantly.
That was on, uh, 365? That was on?
Yeah.
Really? Wow.
That was right up from White Hall Road, I believe, up near Lula Road or something.
Yeah, it was north of Lula Road. I mean, and I brought it up several times at the meetings, you know, that it's, you know, Gainesville Times their self, you know, has listed 365 and Lula Road there, you know, top five deadliest intersections in Hall County.
Oh, yeah.
We just threw those warehouses up there like it's nothing. Then you're going to throw 323 homes right there, you know?
And then on top of that, we, Verell and I were talking to Amanda Browning. And the main reason, one of the main reasons she wanted to run in Lula was they've already approved 300 something homes on Athens Street.
Yeah.
And they're wanting to put in 300 and something more.
Well, I won't get the property to do it.
Athens Street can't handle everyday traffic, much less 600 homes.
Well, you know, like I've told people, if you go read the G dot plan, that plan is to widen 52, whether they like it or they want to listen to it. Um, I know they don't like it and they surely didn't want to listen to it, but they need to go look at that secondary plan on that, uh, 365 widening includes 52 and they want to say, well, 52 doesn't run through Lula, but we all know in the state of Georgia, you know, we can say that's 365, 23, 441. Well, 51 can become 52 real quick.
Oh, yeah.
51, 52 widened through there and it's going to go right and left through Gilsville, through Lula. And there's their direct path to, to 85.
Yeah. But that's going to happen and we're going to end up having a new school, going to have, have a new elementary school, middle school and a high school in that area. I mean, they're already overcrowded as it is and move any more people up in there and because we want to build more apartments and homes because of the inland port, then you throw in Cagle Road if it gets approved.
Now Cagle Mill, don't get them confused, Chris. Cagle Mill.
Mill Road, yeah.
They get, they get wound up out here when you start saying Cagle again.
Yeah.
By the way, that, that property is back up for sale.
Ah, okay.
The, that one that caused the stir that they rezoned, the financing fell through on the developer. So that land is rezoned and back up for sale and nobody's grabbed it yet.
Do you reckon that'll have anything to do with the expansion or thinking about it? Kubota, they're wanting to do them, uh, pay instead of them, those things to pay and pay in lieu of tax deals that they worked out?
No, because they've already zoned that residential. So I, I think it's because of the moratorium that no developers grabbed it.
Okay. I didn't know, because I know Rochester has already come in, Brian Rochester, out on 53, out near Verell's house and wanting to put in 30 townhomes and 400 R V. And boat slips and the only reason he's doing 30 townhomes is because it gets him under the moratorium.
Yep.
And he can do that two or three times and get approved.
The one, the one that y'all are talking about though, if it's already rezoned for X amount of houses, does the moratorium still matter at that point? Cause it's already rezoned. So it's just a matter of them submitting their, um, land L D P., right?
They have to come, since the development fell through, it's already zoned. So they would actually have to come back through with a site plan and everything else.
Oh, okay. So the, the previous site plan doesn't matter anymore since the developer fell through. Oh, wow. Okay.
Well, that'll be good if nobody ever builds, but you know, just don't know. I mean, the way it's going.
Yeah. Cause I, I would think as with the rezoning, whatever plan was approved is like somebody can just sell that potentially and be like, hey, this is ready to go, start building it tomorrow. They, they could. I didn't know they would have to go back in front of, um, the, uh, the, the board.
Yeah. Well, they have to come with a site plan, a building site plan if you're going to build high density.
Now, what's your opinion on this? It ties in all this, this moratorium. From what we understand, we've talked to several people and I know you have too. They've not even started work on redoing the U D C. From when they put in the moratorium, do you think they're going to extend that or they're just going to say, screw it?
I don't think they're going to have a choice. I mean, they haven't worked on it. They don't have a planning and zoning director. They don't have a planning board. Um, you, you really can't plan something if you don't have anything to plan it with.
Right.
And the planning and zoning job was just listed yesterday. So.
Well, and also Pro, not Progs, but Hunt and Braswell and the, those, their main two defenses in this whole thing was the U D C. Said they didn't have to have, you know, they could have a meeting with three or more people as long as they didn't take a vote. So that U D C. Just needs to be ripped up and redone totally anyway.
Yeah. And it, that, that was the point of the moratorium. So, you know, that's, that's kind of my point of this high density on Cagle Road, you know, and I do have the video clip of, you know, Wes Robertson looking at Chris Braswell and saying, well, I pulled this application several years ago when you asked me to, so you could redo the U D C. And now that the U D, U D C.'s been redone, I'm back in front of the board. So, you know, I've done everything the way you said, and I was like, interesting. So, you know, and we have that on video. Thank you.
No doubt. And I'm wondering, and also, you know, with the U D C., why was that even in the U D C. To start with? I mean, these guys, I mean, that just makes no sense why they would have to have in there that they could meet with more than three people in a U D C.
It makes sense when you look who made the U D C.
Yeah. Well, you know, and going to that real quick, I started thinking, do you think that this ties into Winder, much less, uh, could tie into, and you got Cory running, Cory Anderson running against Kathy Cooper. Do you think Kathy didn't renew her real estate license just so she could un-recuse herself on the Winder Highway project that's coming up on December 11th?
Uh, you know, I really don't, I really wonder why she didn't make, maybe she just wants to be out of real estate. Maybe it was.
You can, you can still collect a commission check without a real estate license though.
Yeah.
You don't, you don't need a real estate license.
Work under somebody else's license.
Well, not, not even that. I mean, these wholesalers and the guy, you know, these folks, they go out there and work deals together. You don't, that's, that's, it's a very loosey loose rule when it comes to getting a commission check for real estate transactions and stuff and needing a real estate license. So I'm sure like, but yeah, I, I wouldn't be surprised if she's just kind of a middleman pushing buttons and then somebody else is, you know, getting paid for it.
That she was so hell bent on un-recusing herself.
Right.
And then she knows that Vicky's group was going after the concerned citizens. They made a big deal out of it because she let her real estate license lapse and she still had her name on a few license, on a few properties. So.
I mean, but then again though, like I don't, I don't see how just it being a different address, you're not quote unquote financially tied to it anymore. You can't recuse yourself because you originally were tied to the same exact property. It's just a different parcel, uh, from what it sound like.
What they said at the meeting was it was on the agenda listed that way. In some, some way, um, I would have to, I would have to go ask Mr. Lawhorn what it was, but the county attorney did speak up and say that he did look into it and it, she was legally able to vote.
Well, and that's the same way with Braswell. When you filed that against him and they found no conflict of interest on his with the Norton Agency, you know?
Yeah.
You do, there's no way in hell Kathy was going to be found conflict of interest on this new property.
No, of course.
And I think, you know, if she didn't renew it because of that, it's just to remove all doubts. She can just say, hey, I'm not a real estate agent anymore. I'm not the listing agent, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah.
So there's just so much shady stuff going on and you know, you've got to think this way to keep up with what they do.
Yeah. You, you definitely have to sit back and, and look at everything and look at it from every standpoint and lay your papers out and start saying, okay, and, and, and go back and like I tell everyone, I like to have it in black and white in front of me and say, okay, I, I have an assumption. That's great. But now let me actually put this right to paper and say, I have it. It's right here. Look, it, I can show it to you. Um, this isn't, you know, a conspiracy theory. This isn't made up, you know? And, and half this stuff I look at, I, I'm amazed that they even put it in black and white. They make it too easy for you.
Right. Well, and it's just, they've had it easy because in the past, I've been here my whole life and Verell's been here for a long time too. Anybody that's ever challenged them, they give a answer that sounds good or a reason that sounds good. And everybody just goes, oh, okay. They don't ever push it.
Yeah. Well, I guess I'm just an over thinker.
Well, no, I mean, people, there's been a lot of people wanting to do this, but they needed somebody like you to step in that's got the guts to just, you know, and it would.
Kind of like set a precedent to, to start that you can actually question the government.
It's a lot easier for you, not saying you, but someone in your position that moved here is not a native. Because everybody that you're going up against on that commission or one of these boards, you've got friends or family that knows them pretty much, you know, and it, it can create a lot of infighting with a lot of people. And that's why people just don't back up. They just back out trying to push anything.
Yeah, I don't know. I guess I just wasn't born or built that way. I mean, even where I come from, I, I don't care if it's you, brother, sister and uncle, right is right, wrong is wrong. And
Oh, yeah.
You gotta, I, I think that is, I agree with you. A lot of it is that there's so much intermingling and intertwined. And that needs to be undone in our government. And I keep telling everybody that this isn't a law, this isn't a short-term game. This is a long-term game and it has to be all the way to a ballot box.
Oh, yeah, it's gotta be. I mean, and that, and the commission, that's what they're hoping is this is just going to be gone when this is over with. I think they're learning that that's not going to be the case.
Yeah, I agree.
And also we have to take a road before we move to the data center. At one point you had a lot of people from the neighborhood coming to the meeting and raising cane and being vocal. So it literally got mad as a dickens at that one meeting and showed his rear end. Are those people still as fired up and as mad and?
Oh, there's more, there's more now. There's more now.
More now? Good. You know, sometimes the distance calms people down, you know, if they stretch it out over several months.
Yeah. Well, I think that's what they were hoping for, but, and that they actually grew the, grew it more than they calmed it down.
Well, that's good. Maybe they'll all show up on December 11th.
Yeah, I think December 11th is going to be a fireworks.
Oh, yeah. That meeting is probably going to last at least two or three hours.
Oh, yeah.
A minimum.
I think two, three hours is, yeah, like you said, a minimal. It might go longer than that.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm kind of upset because we're, we're leaving for a couple of months, um, this upcoming Monday. Am I going to be able to attend that December 11th meeting?
Oh, you better have, you better be online.
Yeah, no, I'm going to watch it online.
So.
I, I wouldn't miss that. That's, that, yeah.
Oh, no, it's going to be a, it's going to be a doozy. And, uh, now, and the thing is what's telling about this is Cagle Road's not even the main issue on the, the agenda on the, the December 11th. Meeting is the Cagle, it's the data center that's being built. That's going to be 900,000 square feet and we can't find out any information on whether it's going to be water cooled or, you know, we don't know what type of data center it's going to be, who the clients are going to be and Verell can. And Virgil can, he knows a lot more about data centers than I do. I know enough to. You know, but Virgil, he's went into, I mean. We just need to know the details of what's going on and what we're getting now. I mean, it's just not good.
Yeah, I mean, that's the thing, they're not, you're not gonna get details. The they can hide behind NDAs and whatnot, but until you actually get. This little zoning approval for it and whatnot, they're not gonna invest the time into actually, you know, proper engineering plans, actual water usage plans. Uh any of that stuff, so you're you're not gonna get any of that. You can. Push them and push them and push them, but until you get a rezoning. The likes of A W S or or Meta or Open A I or any of these guys are not gonna, they're not gonna touch it, so.
And did you think, I mean, I want your opinion on the data center overall, Jody, do you think that. Since Habersham turned theirs down last night, could that snowball into Hall County or is it, you think it's pretty much a done deal?
You know, it it's it's hard to say on this one. Uh I think there could, you know. At first, I I I would say, you know, I would believe it will be a sealed deal. But I think there's been a little bit of shift. So I think it it might be a surprise for everyone which way it goes. I don't, I wouldn't bet on it.
I don't, I don't, I actually don't like the fact that they're still pushing forward with this one. With Braswell's involvement. Before his hearing on the seventeenth. Like i- i- in my opinion, and again, I'm not against or for this data center, like I'm kind of neutral to this, but. Just because of those ties, I feel like this just has to be completely. Disqualified and you gotta start start it all over, uh because obviously certain things were done behind closed doors. Where it's even gotten to this point of this final vote in front of the Board of Commissioners, so, yeah, I mean, and that's just my opinion, obviously, but. Um, yeah, it just, it really just doesn't sit right with me that it's it's continuing to move forward that that way.
Yeah, but now you look at it on the other side of that, play the devil's advocate, though, and you're the developer, uh you know. They're they're gonna say, well, it's not our problem that you had a guy that was breaking the law, you know. It's not our problem that you're planning.
But they were breaking the law with him, they were breaking the law with him. Were they, were they not potentially?
Potentially, well, actually, if you go back in the emails, there were email chains where they were emailing. And they were including Chris on the emails after he recused himself. So, you know, if you want to be real technical, yes. Were there communications? We with Chris, yes, there were communications with Chris after that. In, you know, packets that they, like I said, they put it out there, it's too easy for you, you just gotta read. The email chains were there. Um the worst thing that I I actually stumbled upon was when I started reading these. Not only were they not using county emails, they were using personal emails in these chains. So, you know.
That's unacceptable. I mean, that makes it look like you're. Gonna be doing, you know, shady things behind the scenes.
Well, I also found a few that you'll see, you go through that packet and you look and you look at the email chain. And you'll see where it was personal, personally, it was from Beth. To Chris personal, Chris personal to Frank personal, Frank personal to Stan personal. No, to Andre personal and then Andre personable to Stan personal. And then Stan to Shannon Davison county email.
That's just unbelievable. Seeing as I'm, as I'm the fortunate they're bringing Andre into it and he's the new guy on the block, you know.
Well, let me tell you, Andre is no innocent man. Um you sit there and go back and you watch those videos. Andre was being told what to vote on. Um if you watch every single time since Andre was on that board. Either Frank or Stan will walk over to Andre, grab a paper and start pointing to it and talking. And you know, and you're not dumb, you you got the, you got the agenda right in your hand, you can see what, you know, somebody's pointing and talking to him. In his very first meeting, he comes in and he votes to approve Kegel Mill Road. I mean, I don't know about you, but me personally, if we're talking about three hundred and twenty-three homes that I don't even know where that road is. I'm gonna have to say, sorry, guys, I can't vote on this because I I don't know anything about this.
Right.
We got a point.
You should never set foot on the property, right?
Oh, yeah, she admitted openly to me that she she's, I asked her if she's ever been on Kegel Mill Road and she told me no.
I mean, how do you vote on something and you don't even go look at it?
And before this even went to planning, I sent every commissioner an email inviting them to come look at the road. And the only one that responded to me was Billy Powell at the time. And he said, this isn't in front of the commissioners. When it gets here, you know. You're more than welcome to come, you know, ask this again. Well, of course I did and, you know, I I didn't get any reply at all that time. And I, you know, I've asked, I've asked all of them, come, come meet me, come, come look at this nonsense and I, you know.
That's disrespectful, like somebody that's uh active in the, in, you know, within a- as a resident, Jody, you're so active. With all of this, for them to not even give you a, hey, I'm busy, hey, it's not in my district, something like, to me, that that's. That really doesn't, you know, sit well with me. When, because they work for us, you're paying, you're paying county taxes and they can't even give you a a a response to. Hey, sure, let's let's let me come take a look at it. Sorry, it's in not, not my district, so I'm not gonna bother with it. I mean, e- even as rude as that sounds, at least it's a response, like just to get completely ignored like that, so disrespectful.
You're right, it is, and 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 I brought it up and, you know, I went to the point to, you know, I'm, I'm not one. I I followed Kathy Cooper right to her car, I don't care, I'll tell you I did. Uh and and stood right by her car. Um thankfully, another citizen was kind of over there and they took a picture of it. And sent it to me. She told me to my face three times o- on this project. Well, it's Greg's district, whatever Greg votes, that that that's what I'll vote. So Greg's a solid no. So if Kathy isn't a solid no on December eleventh, I'll be sure to let her know. You you lied to my face as a citizen three times.
Right.
And, you know, lying to somebody's face is pretty disrespectful.
Yeah, absolutely, I agree. I mean, especially when you're a public servant, you're you're, we literally pay your salaries. You're, you're, you have electricity and air conditioning and heating in that building because we fund it.
Yep.
I get it.
So asinine.
You know, and I just wish the people would get upset about Cagle Road as they did the data center.
Mill, Cagle Mill.
I mean, Cagle Mill, yeah. It's like there's a data center.
They, everybody, like I said, try and tell everybody, you know, there was a comment made several months ago by an attorney on. Uh the Martha Zoller Show, um when I called in, her comment was that I only cared about my backyard. And I didn't hear the comment, I was told about the comment and I quickly left that attorney a voicemail and let them know. I think you better figure out who I am and what I stand for, because if anybody really knows and watches me. It it, I am all over this county, like, I don't care, I I'll be there to support north, south, east, west. I'm gonna support everybody, just like you said, you know, they're trying to put this new development on o- o- on Virgil's side of town. You know what? I'm gonna be sitting right there saying, oh, no, we ain't gonna do, no, 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 no.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's crazy. And to top it all, on that one on Virgil's side of town, they're gonna put four huge community septic tanks in. Right next to the lake, I mean, you know, come on. You know, that's just unbelievable.
What happens then is you look, you know, you look twenty years down the road. At those community septic tanks and, you know, the developers out of the picture, everything's said and done. Well, guess what? That septic tank, something happens to it. Who's responsible then? All of them homeowners? What if three of them don't have the money to fix it? You know, that that, then whose problem does that become? Does that become all the other homeowners? Does that become the taxpayers?
Usually ends up being the taxpayers.
Yeah.
So it's, because that commissioner's long gone, the developer's long gone, like you said, so it's like, oh, well, you know, we can't hold any of these guys responsible, but at the end of the day. The commissioners were representing the county and the county. Needs to take take up for this because the residents can't can't afford to 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 fix it, so.
Yeah, I I mean, it it it's kind of like I said, you know, like I told a friend one time, he he was looking to buy a condo and I said, you know. You you better think about that, because if your neighbor ain't got the money to fix the roof and there's a hole in the roof, you know. You you might be paying for a whole new roof over both of you, so. I I don't, I don't get it. I don't think it should be allowed. I see them running sewer through North Hall in the near, a nearer future than one would think. But. Again, you don't know about that, you know, well, that's a wait and see.
Yeah, no doubt. And before you have to get off here, what uh, we got the water meeting in a few days. About the, they're gonna be talking about the, at the Civic Center, about the. Contaminants and the. For lack of a better word, the quality of our water coming out of Lake Lanier. And from what we've heard is. Hall County has put off for several years putting in play. Stuff at their treatment plants and the city of Gaines was involved too. Stuff that Forsyth County and Jackson County and Dawson County and other surrounding counties have put in to treat their water. And. Is that, I mean, is that, do you think that leads up to all this contamination just in Hall County and? What do you know what's gonna happen at that meeting on the eighth or whenever it is?
I I I know the speaker has spoke a lot, a lot of places. And I know they're very educated on this subject. Um, I'm not, like, I I'll be real honest with you. I've paid a water bill one time in my life and I was not happy about it. I, you know, I've always been on a well all my life. And I can say, you know, right at this moment, thank goodness for where my well. It it was, I didn't even really, and as long as I've lived here. I have never, you know, I hear some people saying, oh, this happens every year, it's a lake turnover. Okay, I've never smelled it or had it taste this this bad. I lived on a lake in Ohio. Um we actually had a lake in Ohio that had a huge green algae. Bloom that was like neon green bloom and it didn't even smell this bad, so. I'm concerned.
Yeah, see, I've got a whole house filter and you still. Can't, if your eye starts melting in your drink, it just ruins the whole drink. You've got to drink your up, drink. Faster than the ice can melt, because if it gets halfway through the cube and it just contaminates your whole drink.
I'm just gonna say this, if you if you're even using that ice cube, you're risking it, Chris.
Oh, yeah, no, I don't, I mean, I, I'd use it occasionally, but it's not, it's gotten to where I just. I drink bottled and canned drinks most of the time. And what about this? The surprise, what's your opinion on the surprise nominations for the tax assessors with Higgins and Zorzaloff?
Well, you know, we, like I said at the meeting, you know, the Hall County citizens voted Richard Higgins out for a reason. And that was totally disrespectful to the citizens. To vote him back, it to appoint him to a board, the Hall County citizens spoke. They said, we do not want him on a board, so that was total disrespect and a smack in the face to the citizens of all county to do that. David Gibbs's appointment. I don't know the guy that well, um I. I'll sit, I'll listen, I'll watch, I'll observe. I I'm very vocal about, you know. If I see something that ain't right, you know, I'm gonna say something, see something, say something, but I can say that, you know, with that board. That I'm a little concerned because you're only going to have two people on that board. That are even trained out of five.
Right.
Because Casey Riles is still gonna sit on that board, but he doesn't, he has half of his training done. So, you know, you got two people that are fully trained. You got one that's half trained and two that have no idea what they're doing.
They've got to train, what, six months? They got six months to finish forty hours?
Six months to finish forty hours and they have to take a state test.
Right.
And that has to be done within their first year. Uh so Casey Riles is pushing his training time, like he is gonna be at his. Limit of pushing it. So, when we're talking about our taxes and you're talking about people that don't even, that aren't even trained to understand it. And then, you know, you're also looking at. Your chief appraiser is leaving the office. So you have that going, you also have one of your other. High ranking people in that office will be out on maternity leave. How is that office functioning? And and to me, that's one of the leanest running offices we have. So, Hall County citizens, you think your taxes might be messed up or lagging behind or something? You you better, you better show up and I'll tell you, this is one of these boards that. Nobody wants to come to, it's boring, I get it most of the time. But if you watch the video, I'll tell you that we, the chairman that we have sitting there now, and I've gotten up and I've spoken a couple of times. I'll give Eric Eric Jackson the biggest pat on the back there is, because if there is any man that runs a board. According to Robert's rules, almost to the T, it's Eric Jackson.
Right, I've heard good things about him, that's uh, you know, and we'll we'll get into Watson a little bit. There's no guarantee whoever takes over is gonna be able to correct the mistakes that he had going on, I mean. You know, the way the taxes are done, the assessments are done with G Mass and. You can't go behind everybody and check to see if they're in probate or they're not in probate and.
I mean, he had a, you know, him and John had plans, you know, to go back. A- and they had a strategy to go and fix some of those and there were some of them, they were actually. Some of them that they found that they would have kicked off, that didn't deserve to be kicked off. It was like nineteen of them, so there were nineteen people that would have lost that, if you look at that audit. And go back and 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 do the numbers. And John explained the millage rate really well, and especially for someone like, I'll I'll tell you. I I can add, subtract, multiply and divide. When we start throwing letters and all that in there, Jody's out, okay? So, you know, he explained it really well. I could, I could even underst- stand the math. That if you set your millage rate to a certain amount, you set your millage rate that way. So the big thing was, okay, the school's missing out on money. Well, technically, when you looked at it and you looked at the millage rates and the way they were set. If anybody was really getting money taken from them, it was the Hall County citizens and it was to the tune of three cents. Well, how much did that audit cost us? Twenty-seven thousand dollars, okay? So would you rather give up three cents? Or pay another twenty-seven thousand dollars for an audit?
Well, and you. You also gotta look at this. I'd say seventy-five percent of the people, if they come to me and tell me I gotta pay up to seven years. Most cases, it's three years, but commercial and. Business and go back to seven, I believe, but you're gonna have to pay six, three to seven years in back taxes. I'm taking them to court.
Well, the board did go and they did make a policy change and they um did put those. Where you could put, they go back three years, but they did talk about. Um and we're gonna talk about executive session, if they should go back, if they find it to be their mistake. Should they just notify the person and move on? And most of the boards seemed like they agreed with, we'll say this was our fault, we're fixing it now. And move on, and that's when John brought up the millage rate and said. That we weren't really giving away the school tax money, but it was gonna cost every Hall County citizen three cents. Well, you know, I think Walmart probably robs me more of three cents every year.
Yeah, well, and you look, if anybody ta- if they go after them and it's gonna cost them minimum ten thousand dollars here in one court. Look at all these people that go into court, you're talking several, possibly tens of millions of dollars. Depending on what are you finding. You know, the key is finding where the mistakes are being made and be sure it doesn't happen again. Going after the people for mistakes, they had nothing, ninety percent of them, ninety-five percent, I'd say. They're not trying to cheat on the, their property taxes. They just don't know, they don't know any better.
No, I, I, I just look at it, you know, I'm not gonna look. I'm not gonna go snitch on my neighbor. My neighbor don't need to snitch on me. We, we, we don't need that. We need to be neighbors again. We need to be neighbors again and we need to be friendly.
Snitch on your neighbor, cause you're not paying enough taxes.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I'm gonna go to, my neighbor did not pay these tax, oh my.
He's not paying proper taxes on them. I mean, come on.
Uh, yeah, no, that, that, that's not my realm, you know, and I, you know, and if they. If they do figure it out and they come back, okay, pay your taxes, you know, you owe, what you owe? All you're gonna do is pay taxes and die anyhow. That's my theory on it and. They send me my tax bill, yeah, do I get mad? Do I throw the paper around a little bit, crinkle it up and yell? Yeah, of, of course I do and I, you know. But I'm gonna go about it and I'm not gonna, you know, and if I really thought it was super wrong, I would go do something about it, of course.
Right, get a pill and that would lead you right to do it.
Yeah, I mean, and that's the thing. I think people need to realize that, okay, sit back, have some logic, think about this. Get a strategy, have the, the bandwidth and the long end game. To say, this is how we have to pursue this. And is this gonna happen tomorrow? No. Are we gonna get our tax digest one hundred percent? Today, tomorrow, next year, or even five years from now? No, and I don't care who you are.
No, you're not gonna get a perfect office. You're gonna have mistakes. Things are gonna fall through the cracks. I mean, that's just how it works. I mean, especially when you look at the bureaucracy and the. Cumbersome reality of how government operates.
Yeah, unfortunately. I mean, my standpoint is, I, I would like to see where we could get to a point in Hall County. That, you know, we could look at our government and say, no, it's not perfect, but you know what? We're doing okay.
Yeah, no doubt. All right, Jody, well, thanks for coming on and we hope to have you back on again at the beginning of the year. When we start getting into our campaign stuff, cause I know you're involved in. Several things and helping candidates and you got, you got many irons in the fire.
Too, too many. I didn't, I didn't expect, um, I didn't expect all these jobs.
Oh, yeah, I get it. And, uh, you can find Jody at, what's hallinform.org? And her Facebook group on Facebook, Hall In Form. And she's a member of our group as well, North Georgia Advocate. She posts videos and her videos in there and. We work pretty well together, sharing things and helping each other out, so.
Yeah, that's, we just had to work together and all come to a common ground and, you know, just say. Look, we need this fixed. And sometimes it is really about going and saying, this is my problem and I need it fixed. And being demanding about it, unfortunately. Sorry. Like you said, you know, the more people you get that stand up, the more noticeable it becomes.
Before, before we go, Jody, I wanna give you your flowers because I think people like you are very short. In this, you know, with short, short supply in this, in this world. Especially with the, the polarization of politics that we got in this country on a national level, but, um. You know, seeing, seeing you guys and then, um, the multiple Facebook groups that are kind of. Pushing a lot of this stuff in the, in the forefront, whether we all agree with it or not, but just, just getting more eyes on it from residents. Uh, you know, the actual taxpayers. Um, I'm, I'm a true believer in if we can change stuff at a local level, I think we have a pretty good shot. At a state level and then potentially at a national level to hopefully turn this country around. Back in the right direction, but it takes people like you to actually. Push the buttons and I think people, people need to see that, in my opinion. Um, I know I did, uh, cause, cause I was just like. I mean, they're, they're just gonna do it anyways. They're just gonna do it anyways. They're just gonna do it anyways, kind of, that, that kind of mindset, but. Going to some of the meetings, um, seeing you, seeing Cory, Tyler, et cetera, you know, other, other people actually speak up. And give their two cents to the board, uh, the planning commission or, or the, or the planning, um, the board of commissioners. It kind of gives, you know, people like me a little bit more strength to, okay. I wasn't the only one thinking like this, but I'm, I'm glad to see there's other people that are actually. Putting action to what their thoughts were, you know, and actually going up there, speaking up and, and, and doing the work to. Like you said, they make it too easy, but you're still having to do the work to, to go find a lot of the evidence. To kind of like tie it all together and stuff. So I wanna give you your flowers for that and, and being a great leader for this, uh. Uh, for Hall County, I think, I think we're fortunate to have you here.
Like I said, you're doing a great job and just, as long as you want the help and the. Strength and energy, I mean, you know, just keep on plugging. That's, and we're all here to help you any way we can.
Yeah, I think we need to find some, some, some younger, younger minds to kind of. Put some, you know, interns underneath you to kind of, for, for you to, you know, for, for them to learn under you and. Again, steer the ship in the right direction with, with future leaders that are, you know, ho- hopefully gonna right the ship.
And I, you know, I've been screaming that from the mountaintops, e- e- every group I go to. It, it's kind of funny because I've. I've just picked up stuff and I've said, you know what, I'm gonna show up here. I'm gonna go here. Well, you know, uh, there's a public thing. Well, I'm gonna go here. I'm gonna go there. And I'll just strike up conversations with people because one of my huge things is getting our youth involved. And letting them know you have a voice because our youth voter turnout is so low. To me, I just stand back and I think, you know, okay, when I'm gone and my voice is gone. Is somebody gonna stand up and say, you're not doing this to me? And I don't want that to be my children. I have a granddaughter. I don't want that to be her. Fortunately for you, for everybody in Hall County, I'll just tell you right now. Y'all better just, my granddaughter will be a force of nature, okay? She's just like me. Get ready. So, you know, that is, that is a huge point, is that we do need to find those younger groups and say, hey. Come watch this, come see this, um, get involved, know what's right and know what's wrong. And that's why I am a huge stickler on, here is the evidence. There's an assumption, yes, there's an assumption. There might be a little writing on the wall. But until it all is there and it is all laid out. Don't, don't put it out there that, you know, have, have the facts, have the data to show it. Because I don't want our youth looking at something and then coming back and say, oh, that wasn't really true. Because that's what they're seeing right now in our government. Like you were saying.
Yeah, everybody's just disillusioned with the government because it's all lies. Nobody ever gets held accountable. You know, there's always an excuse and that's got to change. And we can make that change at the local level, not state or national per se, but.
Yeah, it's, it's gotta start somewhere. And, and, and it's, it's good to see, you know, from my perspective too, cause I, I thought it was a lost cause at this point in this country. But again, like seeing some of these Facebook groups and, uh, people like Jody. Being more vocal on social media about. Our local government and stuff and more people speaking up and more people speaking, I'm like, hey, you know, this is, this was going on, da, 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 da. It, it, it's good to see that. Um, again, if, if, I feel like if we, if we right the ship. On a local level, there's momentum potentially that spreads to other commi- I mean, we're, I feel like we're seeing this on a, on a, on a local community level, kind of. Spread like wildfire already. Where other, other counties are, are getting, you know, ethics complaints and there's other Jodies out there now that are filing ethics complaints. Against other commissioners and board of whatnot. I mean, shoot, Forsyth County is, is, is starting to cook up, you know?
They just recalled the mayor and won, no confidence vote.
There you go, you know, and, and, and I feel like it's a good thing. I feel like it's a good thing, um. Yeah, so, you know, I, 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 I see the change. So hopefully if we can get it changed on a local level and it spreads to different communities, I, I feel like that's gonna, that's what's gonna hit the state. And you get one state to drop, you're, you're, that's gonna spread like wildfire to other states and then guess what? Boom, you, you got. Turnover and, and hopefully. A, a national ship that's finally changing course and, and going back to actually making America great again.
Well, I'll say one more thing that I did notice today. I don't mu- mingle much in the Gainesville. Much, I, I, I know you guys do, but I did see a post today where Gainesville was asking for citizens to be on a bunch of different boards. And, um, to fill out applications. And I was like, somebody's getting the message. Somebody's getting the message. We are coming.
No doubt about it. And we appreciate everything you're doing and you get you some rest the rest of the week, cause next week's gonna be hell.
Well, you know, I, I have birthday parties, Christmas parties, and I got Hall County government to count on me, so. If you hear from me by the end of next week and I can't talk like the few, couple of weeks ago, you know what happened.
Okay, well, thanks a lot.
You guys have a good evening.
You too, thanks.